We can please do the roll call.
Councilmember Jawlowski?
Here.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Here.
Vice Mayor Breckers?
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
And Mayor McKay?
Here.
Let's please stand for the pledge. And now if we do this, please.
I pledge to comply of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, our nation, under God, universal, the religion of us all.
All right, thank you everyone for coming out, appreciate it. Counsel, I apologize, but you know, I thought after what happened last Thursday that my own personal opinion was that we should do it differently and the fees are what the fees are. And I don't personally think people would like to see an increase this year and an increase next year. And we're taking money out of reserves, even though they feel we have a little too high in reserves. That we haven't had a storm in a long time, we're past due, and so I would rather say that we hold on to the money in reserves for now, and you know, if we want to buffer it later on down the road somewhere, we can choose to do that, that's not a big deal. But the fees and charges are what they are, whether they're police and fire, whether they're, whatever they are. So I asked for this meeting to have this readdressed and reconsidered. So I'm going to pass the gamble, if I may, over to the Vice Mayor, and I would like to make a motion to reconsider the, what are we calling it? The Waste. What's the correct verb?
Waste Assessment Resolution.
The Waste Assessment Resolution. I'd like to reconsider that. So if I could get a second, I would appreciate it.
One second.
Okay. You want to open it to, you want to read the resolution first?
You have to vote.
Oh, we don't have to vote, first?
There's a motion and a second.
I got a motion and a second. But we didn't read the resolution yet, so.
No, they're making a motion for reconsideration, it's got a, a motion and a second, we have to agree on the roll call.
Yeah, all right. So, keep going, roll.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Jawlowski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckers?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Now that the initial solid waste assessment resolutions back on the agenda for consideration, let's, please, reinteract.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, related to the provision of solid waste services, facilities and programs to residential properties in the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing authority for solid waste services assessments, providing purpose and definitions, providing findings, incorporating the Solid Waste Special Assessment Methodology Report, directing the preparation of an assessment role, authorizing a public hearing, and directing the provision of notice thereof and providing effective.
Now Mayor, the item on the agenda has the subsidy from the solid waste assessment reserves. So if we're here tonight to consider a, not funding any of the waste assessment from reserves, from that particular reserve, the solid waste reserve, the motion on the table would be to amend the resolution before us to remove any subsidy from the reserve.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to remove any subsidies from the reserves to have it be the full amount of what the impact related to garbage is. Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Mayor, I don't know if you want to have the staff presentation and public comment first, that's up to you.
No, no, you need a motion or?
Need a motion.
If I made a motion, if somebody'd second it, I'm good.
Second.
Okay.
Do you need us, I mean, we just did this, do you want another staff presentation or do you want to just have full debate?
Five, five slides and it outlines.
If Marty can be short, quick and do the point, I, Marty can go forward with his
Thank you Mayor, good evening, my name is Martin Sherwood, the Town Financial Administrator. As, as the mayor's alluded to, is a short recap for the revisitation tonight on our adopted initial solid waste assessment. As it sits right now, the anticipated increase is $65.79 to $173.59, depending on lot size, square footage. I need Russell to help me with this slide, give you a little background recap as.
Marty, let me interrupt you just one second. The smaller number you had up there is a number that would double, the $65.
Correct.
That's the smallest. And the largest number is the 173.59.
Correct.
That's the largest. So that would double. In relation to what I'm speaking about doing, that, those, both those numbers would double, one's on the solid waste and one's on the high.
Approximately, yes.
Yes, Mayor, yes, the numbers are in the slide. You said five slides.
I know they are, but the way they're coming out, it's a little.
It will spell it out very clearly.
I needed to give a little introduction, as it stands right now, that there is an increase in effect. Thank you. The garbage assessment is permitted per Florida statute, Chapters 197.3632. The annual rate establishment is required by our Town Ordinance 2002-08, and the initial resolution was adopted by the council on July 27, 2017, for the assessment to comply with Florida statutes and for the truth and mileage notices as distributed by our Broward County Property Appraisers Office. Tonight, we are revisiting and therefore discussing the adopted initial rates prior to an August 4th, that's this Friday, Florida statute and Broward County Property Administrator's submission deadline. Now, as I get started, there's only four more slides, I have a few handouts in the back, if anyone in the audience would like to have one of those take at home, the town clerk has some by his podium, and I have some up here. But this, it's similar to what's going to be coming forth on the four slides on the stages. Now, to the next slide, our solid waste impact, which was the initial rates as adopted. A background for what we already have adopted is, over the past five years, that's 2013 to 2017, the solid waste collection rate has decreased by nearly 35%. The contractual agreement, which allowed for these reductions, reached the end of its term at the end of this year, that's 9/30/17. After going to bid, establishing numerous contacts and substantial negotiation, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder required significant cost of service increases, approximately 73%, to offer the identical services. With the utilization of 300, 800, $3894,000 in solid waste fund net position, the fiscal year 2018 proposed average increase is approximately 25%, and this is smoothed over all property categories. For example, the residential rates would only increase by approximately 17% for a lot square footage of up to 41,200 square feet. The solid waste fund projected net position at 9/30/2017 is $1,626,97. A GFOA recommended working capital best practice target suggests a minimum of 45 days of annual operating expenses. Now, the town utilized a more conservative 60 days, and as calculated, a 60-day reserve balance would be $280,090. So, use of the 384, $894 is projected to leave a remaining balance within the solid waste fund of $761,803, which is almost triple a more conservative town recommended minimum balance. And finally, the initial adopted fiscal year 2018 rate ranges would remain lower than all the property rate ranges retroactive from fiscal year 2012, that is, the period of time prior to our current contractor. With our smoothing, the rates would remain lower by an overall average of 16.6%. Okay, enough for initial. Now, the next slide discusses our solid waste rate impact without the utilization of net position, and that's what we're here to discuss. Without the utilization of the 300, 800, $3894,000 in solid waste fund net position, the fiscal year 2018 proposed average increase is approximately 54% over all property categories. Residential rates would increase by approximately 43% for a lot square footage of up to 41,200. And secondly, it is important to note that if the solid waste initial fiscal year adopted rates are changed to those rates without the utilization of net position, the rate ranges would be mostly higher than all of the property rate ranges retroactive from fiscal year 2012 by an overall average increase of 2.4%. And that was a question that came up by the Vice Mayor specifically, above what the impact would be. Now, moving into the dollar impact, which is my slide number five, please. This gives you the overall impact, three columns, I don't have the pointer here, but all you have to concentrate on is our total current assess rates in the middle, straight down, by lot square footage range, the adopted initial rates, what we did on the July 27th, as proposed, and it's about 44,000 rounding, a square footage, that's correct.
43,560.
Exactly, thank you Counsel. 43,560 square feet, feet per acre. The final column on the right would show the initial rates for fiscal year 17, 18, without a net position utilization. And instead of going from a range of $65.79 to $173.59, it would go to 169,000, excuse me, $169.26, I apologize, to $328.89, and as what the mayor has mentioned, would be in some cases, double or more. So, our final slide goes basically to our recommendation, it's that your Town Administrator and Town Financial Administrator's recommendation, that the Town Council of Southwest Ranches retain the adopted initial solid waste resolution presented on July 27, 2017, setting the rate maximum, which provides for a smoothing solid waste, recycling rates closer to market through a graduated rate increase for fiscal year 2018. Thank you.
Go back to your last, go backwards to your last slide.
Okay, that's a good one to use.
Okay, so, it's pretty simple. The last two columns on the right, last year, the top column of 450,544, the increase, full boat with everything, without the $300,000 buffer, is 558,91. And you just follow that down on your square footage lot size, and that's what the difference is for everybody. So that's the full boat amount, there won't be another increase next year, the way they're setting it up now is using a $300,000 buffer, and you're going to pay half of it this year and half of it next year. I don't see why we're doing that, it doesn't make any sense to me. I know we're a little high on the reserve side of it, but we haven't had a storm or hurricane in quite some time, ladies and gentlemen, and we very well may need that money. So, I would tell you, that's kind of my position, my feeling of the matter, but I would hear from you all, so I'll.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Maybe I can just frame this a little bit.
Go ahead.
So that everyone in the audience knows why, why we're here. As a result of our waste vendor, which was, which is now Waste Management, the LGL, but before that, it was Sun. As a result of their contract expiring, in their decision to sell the waste management and not renew their contract, the town went out to bid, and we knew we were going to be in for a major increase in waste costs because of the way that the original vendor did the job. So, the council's known about this probably for two years now, that this was going to occur. We ended up selecting a new vendor who was the lowest bid that we received, very solid company called Waste Pro, one of the largest in this region, actually, collection of waste that Trevor finds, Hollywood in other words, and otherwise, and they provided us with the best cost for the waste collection. But that waste collection number is still double what our prior number was, which is why the waste costs doubled. Administration felt that the waste reserve, there's a separate reserve for waste, it's not the general town's reserve, it's a separate reserve fund completely, that the waste reserve fund was sufficiently funded, so administration made a recommendation that we subsidize the increase this year through some of the funds that were in the waste reserve. That's what was adopted when we had our budget hearing last Thursday night. Since that hearing, the mayor requested the meeting tonight because he relooked at it and believes, in the wake of the tropical storm that just came through and otherwise, that he did not want to take the money out of the waste reserves because in the event of a significant storm event, the town would have a significant reserve that it could help fund any potential issues in the town relating to storm cleanup. So the item before the council tonight and the public tonight is whether or not to subsidize the first year by taking some funds out of the reserves to subsidize the waste cost, or in the alternative to just fund the entire thing by the waste dollar amount that you see in the fourth by column, and, and keep the money in the reserves. That's certainly the two sides of the equation. Administration takes a position that there would still be sufficient funds in the reserve even if we did subsidize it, we always have a lot of credit left, the mayor is being more conservative on this issue, and that's the debate.
Okay.
We will open the public to the passage again. I'll open a public comment.
John Eastman, 188 Avenue. I spoke to the council many times about the need for this reserve, because when we had Roma 10 years ago, a little over 10, it was 10 and a half million dollars was the cleanup cost. So, I have to agree with the mayor on this one, I think that, that fund needs to be left on the side there as a ready cash when we need it. Because when the storm hits, it's a mess, and, you know, I think if we, if we're more careful about how we go about our cleanup, we can probably get it done for a lot less if we're not in a big rush. But having that money there in arrears is nice, that, that's a nice cushion to have there. And I'm going to go along with the mayor's position on it, let's pay whatever it is, but I think that the administration has done a very poor job with the bidding. Having a 70% increase is not acceptable to me, I think there's other options we can, we can make. There's, there's three large nurseries in town that have the equipment for doing the work. Has anybody approached them and asked them to come in and look at this? Possibly. The most excellent job that the lawyer did on the contract was a little overboard, and sometimes these tricky contracts can drive the price way up. You know, maybe we need to look at simplifying the contract a little bit, and allowing a little more wiggle room for days that the guys can't muster and get out to pick up the trash, you know, give them the day or two leeway, they might go a little easier on us. I know the county has raised trash rates at the, at the dumps, you know, so that's a factor that everyone has to deal with, we can't do anything about that, but it just seems to me that maybe we need to relook at, you know, the whole process again. And I think there's a six-month look back on.
One year true up.
A true up, right.
One year true up or down.
Okay, does that go on every year, or is? Just one time, okay. You know, maybe we need to include more true ups, because if it costs go up or down, you know, it enables the vendors to be more responsive. In other words, they're, they're bidding a high price because of what may happen, and then they're locked into it, so if you give them a little more wiggle room, maybe we can get it down somewhat. But I think that if the big boys don't want to play with us, then maybe we need to do what this King Park does, and they have their own garbage truck and a couple employees, and they go out and they collect the waste. You know, maybe we need to look at that, doing it ourselves. It's not rocket science, you know, it's, it's numbers, and, you know, having some large vendor come in, you know they're going to be making a significant amount of money off us, so it might be better to look at doing it ourselves.
I'm in favor of what the mayor wants to do, and I've thought about this, I know that when we got hit by that storm and FEMA came in and picked up the tab, they won't do it again. They will come in and clean the roads, pay for that, and we're going to have to have a pretty good sized chunk of money, plus we're going to have to have some rules. If you all remember, everybody cleared their property, it wasn't like they were just clearing their road or the timber off their houses, and it just, there was no way of controlling it. So, we don't have a whole lot of money in there, believe it or not. If you look at how much it cost us, or FEMA, it was millions, and we don't have millions sitting in there. So my little piddly $300, no, it went up $200, it's nothing. When it hits, and I've got a bunch of trash and we have to get out of there, timber, it's going to, that's what's going to happen. So, if you guys manage to get a lot, a lot, a lot of money, then maybe you can just pick up the tab for one year, if you ever get to that point. You know, if you accumulate millions in there, and it only costs $300,000 a year or whatever, then maybe you could just pay one year and give everybody a free ride for one year. But I know you can't use this money to fix anything else, this is directly, this money goes solely for bulk pickup and cleanup after a storm. And so, to me, it's, I'd rather just pay it, and when the storm hits, know that we've got enough money to do it, that you're not then turning around and making a new tax because we went way over in the cost, and now you've got to put it back.
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 100, D.A., Terrace. You know, when you all talked about this a couple weeks ago, I thought that concept of smoothing might have been a good idea, because, you know, there's a lot of folks in our town that are on fixed income and have a, in my case, $300 increase, or like that, I wouldn't have minded it. But the more I thought about it, particularly, you know, a couple people have talked about FEMA, this administration may tell us, D.C., I mean, they may not be a FEMA next time. My guess is that if there is money available, it's not going to be like we had with Wilmington 10 years ago? 12 years ago. So, in my mind, we ought to be hanging on to as much of this as possible, because I'd rather pay the extra 300 bucks this year, and of course, then again, next year, rather than you come back to all of us for a special assessment when that big storm comes to, for everybody to have to pay for a cleanup at that point. So, I am for the mayor's proposal, and would encourage you to, to implement that strategy because I don't want to pay for it later, I'd rather pay for it now. Thank you.
Lauren Gould, 17621 Southwest 61 Court. First, yes, I agree with the mayor, but secondly, there's something that I think is of even greater concern as I look at this. Whether we adopt it in its current form or not, all you're talking about are initial rates. There's nothing to say this isn't going to skyrocket even farther, and so, nobody has addressed that, I haven't heard that. I would like that addressed, I mean, I'm on Friday, of course, as many of us are, so I'm at the bottom, which means I'm at the top, and this, this is a ridiculous sum of money. And then not knowing, well, is it to infinity? So please, address that, thank you.
Kathy Sullivan, 17200 Southwest 59 Court. I disagree with the mayor's idea. I think that an increase of this magnitude is completely unacceptable, should be unacceptable to everybody in town, and you can call it $300 in your tax bill, or $100, this large of an increase is unacceptable. You know, we can go with what crappy service we have, and I think many residents are sick of hearing, you get what you pay for, and that's why we had crappy mowing, and that's why we had crappy solid waste pickup, it's not the point. This is way too large of an increase to pass on to your residents, everyone can afford it, and everyone should not be saddled with it. We can't wait saying gambling, I bet we get a hurricane this year, because they were getting it to the last year, and they said it the year before, and they said it the year before. You know what, if we get a big one, the million dollars isn't going to cover it, and FEMA will come in when they say it's a state of emergency. But we can't live our lives counting on that next hurricane, we do live in Florida, you need to take care of your residents that voted in, not to have, is it a 70% tax increase? It's ridiculous. You guys voted unanimously not to do that to the residents, and hope you're secure.
Sandra Thera, 13000, Stantria, sorry, not giving. I wasn't at the meeting last time, and I just do it on this one, and I don't really have to really give a good opinion, but just from a little bit I see, I do agree with what Kathy said, and the other point is, I see is, when, when will my hit? I remember that as a resident, we took responsibility for our property, and the other point that a lot of people do is clean up and take advantage, and I think that's not right, I think we do a lot here that people take advantage. And so that if it's a hurricane, a true hurricane, and the town is taking care of that cleanup, that's one thing, but when people put everything else out, that's too much. And I learned from that mistake as well, and every year now, I get my trees groomed, and I take care of it all the time. And I think, you know, if we just clean up and fix everything for the residents, then they have no impetus to maybe keep their properties maintained all the time. So that's just a thought as well. So, I would rather leave it the way it is from that standpoint, that's my two cents,
Noel Hollis, 198 Avenue. Everyone keeps saying that with the new administration and everything, that FEMA will be different. But the laws of FEMA and the rules and regulations of that department have not changed one iota yet, and they're not going to change for this year. So what FEMA is, was last year is the same as this year, so FEMA is irrelevant. They're going to pay what they would have paid last year and the year before, and the same thing if for a moment. And that depends on the Congress of the United States, and they have always come through for those affected areas, even New Jersey. So, that is not a consideration at this point. The only consideration is whether or not there is enough money in our funds, either in the general fund surplus or the special fund, to pay for the initial starting and first checks out. We have set up a, a loan program, I don't know what it's called.
Line of credit.
Line of credit, thank you. We have a line of credit that we have kept every year, that we take into, and then FEMA will reimburse us after that, a certain percentage of that. 100% we hope. But we had the same problem with Wilmington, if you remember after that, where for several years after Wilmington, we were in negotiations with FEMA to reduce the amount that they said that we, we were over-granted and had to repay. And there's still a couple of hundred. And there's still a couple of hundred thousand that we have a credit towards them. I don't know if that's been removed yet or not.
It's been resolved.
That's been resolved, okay. Can I continue?
Yes.
So we have that taken care of. So what we're looking at basically is whether or not there is a surplus of a surplus within this fund, not the general fund, but the special fund. And since this has been built up for waste, regular waste removal, I think that this should be drawn down somewhat. And it's the amount that we have, the council has already chosen. And it should remain that way. Where this very large increase that we would have hit of 389 to 558 on the lower end A, which is a couple of hundred dollars, which is a major impact, to mitigate that as we go forward. Because we had a very sweetheart deal with a lousy company. And we have to look at it that way. And now we're going to have to pay the piper. Other municipalities are doing the exact same thing. And I think that this contract that we have is a better contract than we had before. But in a better contract, you have to pay for a better contract and better service. So we're doing that and hopefully that this new group Waste Pro will be a better company. And first indications are from Andy and the rest of the staff is that they are very amenable to us and working with us to get this online quickly and pop with as least impact as possible. As we go forward with that, maybe there's some mitigation we can do with them. But I don't know at that point. But what I say right now is that a $200 increase, 200-plus dollar increase for one year is a very hard thing to swallow at once. And so let's make it into two deals instead of one. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't know. Hi, how's everybody?
Pull that mic down to you.
Simply to the point, from what I understand, you all voted last time unanimously to keep it $130 or whatever it is and not to raise, I don't know, we change it every single time, get something that goes the way everybody wanted and then go back and review. It doesn't make sense, so I just like to say I think you should keep it the way you voted for it. Let's move on, that's it, thank you.
George Morris, 591 Southwest 103rd Avenue. I had put a lot of thought into this and, you know, a large increase, this is very difficult on people, I understand that. But at the end of the day, you're going to pay the piper one way or the other. So you can pay now or you can pay later. I know it's difficult, but maybe a suggestion may be to have people who have vacant land to share in that kitty. That way, overall, we reduce everybody's liability. There's a lot of people out there that have vacant land that have invasive species trees, hollies, pine trees, et cetera, and they're taking that fill and they're putting it on their neighbor's lot, et cetera. We're paying to take it away, but we're not gaining the benefit of them paying. So it may be something to consider. I know there's a study that may need to be done, et cetera, but if we can include another 100, 200 vacant lots into the kitty, we'll reduce everybody else's expense. And there is a need for people that do have vacant land to utilize the services of bulk trash pickup. So just a suggestion. I don't necessarily disagree with the mayor, I just think there's other ways of maybe considering other sources of income and that would be the vacant lots, a suggestion.
Any other public input? Public input is closed, council discussion?
Sure, I guess a couple of things. If Andy or Marty could answer some of the questions they have. I know there's a cap at the end of the year, there's going to be a true up or a true down and there's a cap on it. I don't know what that cap is, maybe Andy does or Marty does. But there's absolutely a stopping point to that. So if you could answer the questions or those except, that would be appreciated.
I'm not sure the exact amount, I apologize for that. However, there is a true-up that will take place at the end of the first year that is maxed out, that is subject to change based on actual collection during the period of 10/1/17 to 9/30/18. And that is being planned to be addressed during the 19 budget. That will be addressed with any potential increase. However, it does have a true up and a true down. So if the tonnage comes in lower than, as contracted, the town takes advantage of the true down as well, one way or the other.
All right.
Keith? The increase, the increase under the code, under the contract cannot exceed the rates experienced by the county in 2012, which was our pinnacle of waste rates. Just for a reminder to the council, the reason why we enjoyed such a ridiculously low rate for so long was because of the fact that our waste numbers were 100% misreported by our prior vendor when that contract went out. So we had Waste Management two contracts ago and they were commingling the town's waste with waste from other municipalities that may or may not have been paying more money per ton than the town. And as a result of that, when we went out to bid, we asked what our waste numbers were, particularly for bulk waste, because our bulk trash is one of the highest in Broward County, the amount of bulk that we produce and put out. And Waste Management gave us a number. And so we bid it out based upon the Waste Management number and when Sun kind of came in, they were bound under contract by those numbers. Well, word got out in the industry very quickly that the town's numbers were completely bogus. And as a result of that, when Sun opted not to continue with the contract under their new company, which is Waste Management again, not surprising, that's when the town reported the proper amount. But because the town finally reported the proper amount, and it was by no fault of ours, it was being misreported by the vendor, I want to make that clear. But when the town finally was able to report the proper amount, there was still an uneasiness or not, the trust wasn't there yet to say, "Yeah, we agree with you that those were your waste numbers because of what happened in the past," which is why when that contract was determined, there was that true-up. But the true-up does have a cap not to exceed the rates that the town was charged the last time we actually had a firm number on our waste, which was in 2012. The one thing I should say is after that true-up, there is not another true-up, you know. So what that true-up is, is what it will be under the five-year contract. And as a result of that, we don't expect any massive changes between what it is today and what it will be after.
Could be a true down also.
Pip it, people stop putting out bulk, you pip it.
Yeah, mayor, we didn't have the true-up in our original specs this year. And when we went out to bid, there were multiple vendors who were intimidated by our bulk numbers and chose not to respond. We added that, the true-up, in the bid process in order to make sure we got something back. Because we were concerned we weren't going to potentially get anybody to bid on this based on the feedback we were getting during the bid process.
Okay, David, Keith, would you add in, explain the teeth we have in this contract versus the zip we had in the other? I mean, there's no comparison in contract, but that contract's already signed, it's a five-year deal. Neither them or us can come back out of it at this point. But it's got full performance funds, penalties and otherwise. And regardless of what the contract says, they were the lowest responsible bidder. So out of everyone who bid on the contract, they were the absolute lowest to give the residents the same service that they're enjoying today. Well, better service, but the same level of service that they are experiencing. Okay.
All right, council?
I don't like go over it all the time. As much as I want to say I agree with some of the residents and Doug, I can't sit up here and talk about D. Schroeder. I'm not D. Schroeder, I'm representing the people out there. And if they want the smoothed over and they want it in two parts instead of one, the majority of the people, that's what we're here for, to give them what they want and what they think they can handle. I mean, it kind of looks like a 50-50 slug here tonight, but I did some figures on my own figuring what mine would be. My increase for this year on a 2.5 acre parcel is roughly $136 from last year with this smoothed over. If I do the full thing, it's $273.65. It doesn't sound like that much, it sounds like rip the Band-Aid off, get it over with and let's just move on. You're going to get an increase from the county too. That's coming. So it's very difficult, like I said, to sit here and say what I want. You know, I have to give the residents what they want. And it just sounds to me like it might be easier for them to swallow this pill if it isn't a two-part project. And like I said, when I walked in here, I'd already made up my mind. I just didn't think it was that big of a deal. Just do it and get it over with because you're going to have to do it next year. So I'm, I'm, I'm holding my thoughts right now. I want to hear the rest of the council.
Okay, thank you, everybody for coming. You know, we're being faced with higher taxes regardless. It's a question of how we're going to pay for it right now. Are we going to take and tap into our rainy day fund? Which is really what that is, except there might be a really rainy day that we have to tap into. Or are we going to have the residents pay full freight right off the bat? That's really what's questioned. I'm all for what we voted on last week, we voted unanimously, smoothed it over, you know, help them out, help the residents out in some measure that we can. We're getting hit with tax increases everywhere, there's instability. Do I think we need to hit it harder? No, I don't. If we get hit by a major hurricane like Wilma, a $300,000, that's a spit in the ocean. That's all that is. But it might help this year if we don't get hit and somebody on fixed income is paying it back. You know, it can be a real impact on people. And it goes on and on from there. And I guarantee you, if a hurricane hits us, we're in trouble. Okay, there's no ifs, ands, and buts about that, it's a question how we handle it after that. We have the financial resources through the line of credit, we have it through our reserves. You know, I think we're in a good position to handle that. I think we're in a good position to grant this tax rebate. Now, everybody has to remember, this is money you've already paid in. We're not borrowing this money from anybody. It's sitting in the bank. We're saying, "Let's use some of it." We're not using the majority of it, we're using a third of what's in there roughly, approximately 30%. I don't have the exact percentage, but somewhere around that, it's right around $1,000,000. And I think it's money well spent because it's spent on our residents, you know. And if we could come back and invite us in the area, you know, I mean, we're all on the dice every year. That's not a, that's not a big surprise to anybody that's lived here for the last 20 years, 30 years. And I think if we can help the residents out, we can, we should do so. We're getting slammed everywhere and we're all looking at how we're going to reduce similarities and how we're going to do this and over and back. And I really think a little bit helps and it helps a lot. And that's my position. Ready?
Yeah, I think all of us like lifestyle over living. We want to be a space, we want to do things. So we also is, you know, people, you know, set a plan for it. If you want this life of lifestyle, Keith, you get open the possibility. Bottom line.
Can I make?
Sure.
A couple of other things. One of the little other catchings, it says in small print, "Based on consultant study" up there. What was the last time we did a study?
That would be back when we basically changed contract in 2012.
Okay. How often are we required to do a study like that or to benefit? And the reason I mention this is the point that George Morris made. For us to go after vacant lots who use it or put bulk out or whatever happens, we have some empty lots in town, but we would have to be required to do a new study. What's a study like that cost? And can the money of the same money we're talking about be used for that study?
Strategically, there's numerous methods on how you could fund this, the consultant cost. The last one was, I believe, in excess of $25,000, $28, anywhere up to $30,000. But that decision to redo a study is policy direction through the council.
No, no, I get that clearly, but I didn't know, like, a fire study is required to be done like every 10 years?
There's no recommended guidelines for when a study is performed.
Yeah, but it's a right decision.
It's generally to the point where a study stays in place for up to 10 years, that's correct.
Okay, so my question would be, to address the thought and input thinking outside the box that George Morris brought up, by bringing in the people that have vacant lots with no residential to charge them both, another study would have to be done, wouldn't it? Yeah, I guess, another study would have to be done, the cost of which in today's dollars is roughly $35,000. But sometimes you often have to be careful what you wait for.
No, I agree.
Because in the event the study comes back that the homeowners are doing much more trash than ever anticipated and that the vacant lots are doing much less than you perceive, their waste rates are going to go even higher than they are today. So, you know, before even considering the study, you really have to look at the area yourselves and say, "Who is producing most of this bulk trash?" Is it the residents, is it the vacant lot or is it, you know, others?
Most of this, it's not so much our garbage, it's the bulk.
It's all bulk.
It's all. There are people that every week, you know, every ball, they've got a maximum of at least 12 yards. So I have to pay for that. I don't use it all the time. I can let stuff sit and rot in the back and compost a little bit. I can find other ways to get rid of it, but I've got to pay for it. I've got to pay because we want it twice a month. Where do they get all this stuff? I've got just as many trees on my property, you know. They do break down, you can put less out. When I ride down the street, mine, everybody, doesn't matter if they're a nursery or not, there's bulk out. I see it. And I've got to pay for it because it's what they want. It's not what I want, but I'm not sitting up here for me anymore, now I'm sitting here for the residents. And, you know, we suggested years ago that we do this four times a year or whatever, that didn't fly. Once a month, that didn't fly. Now we're to twice a month. And if you want it, you've got to pay for it. No one's going to come and say, "Oh geez, I really like this little town, I think I'll do it for half the price because it's a nice little town." It doesn't happen that way. If you want it, you pay for it, just like a pair of sneakers that cost. If you want it, you pay more for our boots.
Okay, the only other thing I'd like to add, if I may, is that I think that we should add in code enforcement, how we have items on the hit list, illegal filling, illegal dumping and those items, I think that we should add to it that the bulk trash, when it's questionable or whatever, that we have people putting out, that that should more so be on the hit list also along with code to be addressing and looking at it without the ongoing complaints. Like if they're around and other neighbors and they know people are putting stuff out illegally. I got a phone call from--
I thought that was going to be in with the trash people who were going to take care of that.
That is 100% correct. The new contract requires the hauler to police. Yeah, yeah, so the hauler's policing it, but they may not--
Yeah, yeah, so the hauler's policing, but they may not know who's not allowed to put out. Like a nurse, I got a phone call today, uh, from somebody put out on 185th Way, who's a nursery and there's not a home there, and they put out bulk trash. So, just as a heads up, so.
Yeah, I mean, so there may need to be an education process.
The haulers, they do haulers, they don't start a lot over first.
So, I just wanna make a couple of comments. So, um, one, one comment that I have heard a lot, uh, not a lot, several times since we voted on this, and actually before we voted on this, and I do wanna make this point a little bit separate, is that there are a number of, of homeowners, 'cause a number of them have contacted me, that have two separate parcels, and the, and so they're actually paying two separate assessments. And I just wanted to make, make the point that if that condition falls into your, you know, if you're, if, if that's you, then you have the ability to put out double because you're paying for double, you're paying twice the assessment, so you can put out two, two piles of twelve. If you, hear what I said, Don, I wanna, I mean, make sure that we understand what I'm saying. So if you're, if you're, if you look at your tax bill, and your tax bill says, shows two assessments for waste, two assessments-
We're just up here with one acre, you pay this, but two there, I think you pay that. Does that allow me to put out more than a guy with one acre or nothing?
No, it's the same amount.
I pay more when I put the same amount.
So- All right, so if you, if you, you know, let me, let me just finish, okay? But I did wanna make that point, because there are a number of residents that do pay a double assessment, and they do have the full right to put out two piles of, of the twelve cubic yards, okay? My, my, my feeling on this is that I don't know what the right number is. How much is enough? How much do we have to, how much money do we need to keep of the residents' money, um, that's enough? What, what's that number? I have no clue what that number is, you know? The last time we had a big storm come through with Luma, it was about ten million dollars that it cost us. But I think that was exceptionally high based on the activity that we saw and the lessons that we learned, that an incredible amount of, um, non-storm-related bulk was put out there by residents because clean-up time, people just took advantage of it. So is the right number ten million? I would hope not, I think it would be substantially less than that because we've learned that lesson, and I think we'll police it significantly more this time, and it'll be lower. But even if it was seven, eight million, are we gonna accumulate seven or eight million dollars' worth of our residents' money in the bank just for that? That's craziness, in my, in my view, that's craziness. It's the residents' money. It's not our money, it's the residents' money. And we have been fortunate in the past that we've been able to accumulate a good-sized fund. Right now, that fund is three-point-seven-nine times the size that our over-conservative, um, financial administrator has put out there, um, which is larger than what the state requires, but our larger number is three-point-seven-nine times larger, um, the amount that we've got than what we, than than the minimum. I would not be in favor of going down to the minimum. But I think that we have enough of the residents' money in our, in our coffers. After this is done, we will still have more than two-point-seven times the amount of funds that, uh, that our financial administrator has recognized. So I think we're still in a very strong situation. As Councilman Jablonski said, if, if, if the worst of the worst hit, this three-hundred thousand is not gonna make, make or break us one way or the other. And, uh, when I, when I talk to the residents, and believe me, as I'm sure you all have, um, I've gotten a lot of calls because the word is out that, um, there's gonna be some increases this year. And so I've had a lot of conversations, as I'm sure everybody who's up here has had a lot of conversations. But this is something that we can do, not to go into debt, not to cut other services, not to create any other hardship on the town, um, but to be able to ease some of the pain, especially for those on a fixed income and those that have limited resources, to be able to kinda ramp up for what, uh, we know is coming in the future. And who knows, maybe they'll be, after the year, uh, they'll do the assessment, maybe it'll come down a little bit and it won't even go up that high. I'm not counting on that, I'm not expecting that, but I would sure hate to see us, you know, go to the max here only to find out that it's gonna be even less next year. So that's, that's not, that, that's, there's, there's a time to accumulate and there's a time to, um, give the residents a break. And I feel very strongly that this is one of those situations where we've accumulated this money for a situation just like this, and that this is the proper time to use that money. Any other, uh, council comments?
No. Yeah, I guess, uh, matter of opinion, how you can, I'm with Friday, you know, it is what it is, you pay it, that's the increase, that's what it is. Uh, you know, I, I don't mind using the money for other stuff, but perfect example, whether if you wanted to do a study, it's thirty-five grand. So, I'm just saying-
There's a grand out of seven-hundred thousand dollars that would be left.
Yeah.
We can afford.
Well, at seven-hundred, but what, what's the ultimate number to hold in that fund?
Right now, we got over a million dollars.
I, we don't yet, but we're going to.
No, we do.
But, but what's the ultimate number? Seven-hundred thousand dollars for holding that account? What, what is the guideline?
The recommended best practice is just purely for working capital was a two-month, uh, actually forty-five days, not even two months. Your staff management is recommending a sixty-day, which would compound to approximately three-hundred thousand, and which we're anticipating with the utilization of the three-hundred thousand, uh, seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand, uh, dollars available.
Okay, man. So, so the net effect is that from a conservative viewpoint, we should have three-hundred thousand, maybe a little less, but three-hundred thousand there. Today, we're projecting that at the end of this fiscal year, which is about a month and a half, we are going to have one million, sixty-two thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars in that account.
Listen, I-
That is way over, and I think that this is a very good use of the funds to be able to allow people to ramp up for some of the pain that's gonna be-
Listen, I, I hear ya, but people are gonna remember this increase and then people are gonna say it was next year. We have another increase of the same amount? Listen, I, I think that's crazy to me. I would rather pay what it is, it is what, what it is as far as the increase, and if you just wanna raise taxes this year and raise it again next year and whatever, if you just wanna raise every year, great, but I'm gonna tell ya, that looks better, it's painful equally, so.
I would rather not see another increase next year on guard. That logic makes no sense. I mean, if, if we're going with that logic, why don't we increase the millage to eight or nine percent? That way we know we're never gonna have to have another increase. I mean, that's, that's just, that's ridiculous, you know? And so is this about the council not getting grief for raising the, uh, the millage thing? Is that the basis?
I, I just think, I think it's worse, listen, if the number is here and we know what the number is, you pay it. It, it, you, you, you pay what it is because that's what the number is. But to cut it in half and say, okay, we're gonna offset it, we're gonna spend three-hundred thousand because we have over this budget, and you're gonna pay it again next year, I wouldn't tell you next year, they're not gonna be happy having that same increase, but it is what it is.
And I don't expect them to be happy, and I, and I, and I understand that, and I, but that's our job. I'm, I'm missing something here, I really, I really am, because this is not, this isn't coming together at all. If we can rebate some money back to the residents, we should, that's our obligation. This, it's not for us to keep, it's for our free men.
Let's give you, okay, well, um, let's look at it another way. What's the number annually that this is gonna-
Mayor, different way to lay it. Councilman Jablonski, were you done yet?
I thought he was done. I lost my train of thought. I love it all, so. But, but basically, the bottom line is it boils down to is this is our money, we have a chance to give it back to them in a meaningful way, I think we should capitalize on it. Yeah, we're gonna have an increase next year, we know that, everybody knows that now, but we have a, a smaller increase next year because we're absorbing some of the cost this year.
Yep.
You know, so it's gonna-
All we're doing is offsetting the cost, aren't you correct? And, and Marty, correct me if I'm wrong, we are not reducing the increase for next year, we're just softening the blow because we're carrying the load for everyone else related to the three-hundred. So if you have the sixty-five dollars or whatever up there, you're gonna invent that sixty-five again next year because we paid the difference with that three-hundred. Is that not correct?
The objective is smoothed-
And I didn't ask the objective. That's not what I asked you, Marty, I asked you if the amount was the same amount of money.
All things being equal, it would be close to the same increase.
Okay, so the three-hundred thousand is only a buffer that the town is absorbing because we're not making the residents pay it this year, we're letting you pay the other half next year.
That is correct, and that is what-
Thank you. I didn't ask for any more.
Accomplishes.
Okay, getting back to where I was, um, the rainy day fund is used for a rainy day and for, you know, emergencies and things of that nature. We are well over what the state mandates and what is, uh, uh, required by various agencies as, as safeguards. To give it back to the residents in form of a tax rate, I think is probably the smartest thing we can do with it at this point. Now, a month from now, we may get wiped out with a hurricane, okay? And that, you know, hindsight's twenty-twenty, okay, you know, we all know that. But right now, I think that is the most prudent use of our money, is that we can help the residents out by mitigating this higher cost that's coming to us no matter what. It's a freight train coming down the road, if we can slow it down a little bit, then I think we should. I think that's the most prudent use of, of, that's all I feel about.
Go ahead, man.
I'm done. Quit him off.
Marty, what is the amount annually that this is gonna cost us? What, what is the total number for the garbage of bulk? One point, one million, one point two million?
The all-in total direct cost is one million, six-hundred, and, uh, approximately fifty-thousand dollars. With the three-hundred thousand smoothing, it brings it down to one million, three-hundred thousand.
Okay, so we're not as close as I thought we were to paying for a year. So my success and our thought was gonna be, if we're that high on numbers and we're that close, build that for a year's reserve and one year moving forward, probably as if they don't know bulk trash for a year. I, I'm, I'm just saying, that's another way to address it, that you say you don't owe that bill for a year, then give them a buffer of the dirt.
That goes against your whole argument for, that we need to retain this money.
I'm just following you on what you all wanna give back money. I'm saying you'll have a better impact or better result related to giving people a year's reprieve than softening the blow and increasing it again next year. That's all I'm saying.
Uh, I, I have a question. So on this vote, what, what does, what's required, what's, what are, what are we talking about here? As far as three votes, four votes, five votes, what's, what's your, it's simple majority?
It's simple majority, right now the motion on the table is to amend the resident ownership that was approved last time to not have a, uh, funding from the reserves, a subsidy. That's the motion that's on the table.
So, which is not used for reserves.
Based upon what your position is, you would vote no to the present motion.
Is there any further discussion on this?
Well, I'm pretty sure if I was sitting out there as a resident, I would probably want a little bit of a break too. It, it, it just doesn't seem, you know, in one respect, that it, it's like to pay it, get it over with, I understand that, but they're, they, they are already being hit with other stuff, I mean, it is coming. And so if they can save this money overall, they're not gonna take that big of a hit next year. It's, it's not that bad, you know? Like I said, I, I did the figures on mine, it's, it's like a hundred and thirty-some dollars a year, I mean, it, it's not bad, but yet, somebody might need that money, and we need to give it to the residents, I guess. We need to give it to them.
Any further discussions? Yep. Call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder.
A vote in favor supports not utilizing reserves, a vote against supports using reserves.
So it will remain the way it is? I'm voting to keep it the way it is, or?
A vote in favor does not have the subsidy from the town.
So I'm gonna vote no. No.
Councilmember Fisickelli.
No.
Councilmember Jablonski.
No.
Vice Mayor Brakers.
No.
Mayor McKay.
Yes.
Okay.
We need another motion. The resolution needs to be adopted more than-
Uh, can I say something? I'm really glad we had this meeting, 'cause I was totally confused, now I'm just a little confused.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, do the waste assessment, as it was passed last time, with the approximate three-hundred thousand dollar, uh-
As drafted in the original resolution.
As drafted in the original resolution.
Second.
Any public comment? Seen a public comment, public comment closed, call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brakers?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
No.
Me neither.